Call the meeting to order. All that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. We'll have council member Fields lead us in the pledge after the prayer. Let us pray. Lord, we come before you today grateful for the opportunity to gather and make decisions that impact our community. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we navigate the discussions and decisions ahead. Help us to seek the common good, to listen with empathy and understanding, and to work together for the betterment of our city. Grant us the courage to stand up for what is right, the compassion to serve those in need, and the humility to recognize our limitations. May our meeting today be productive, respectful, and fruitful, and may our actions reflect our commitment to serving you and our community. In your name we pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, this evening. Appreciate you being here. Hopefully, we'll get through this pretty quickly due to the weather tonight. We're going to go ahead and open citizens' participation. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, come on to the front, and you're limited to three minutes. Seeing there is no one, we're going to go ahead and close citizens' participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items 1 through 3 on the agenda. Seeing there are none, I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 to 0. Board commission and committee schedule. The next city council meeting will be June 4, 2024. We will have a city council workshop on June 5, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. The board of adjustment meeting on June 6, 2024 has been canceled. Planning and zoning meeting will be June 10, 2024, and city council meeting will be on June 18, 2024. Old business and tabled items. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-25 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the City of Republic, Missouri by amending Title 1, Government Code, Chapter 115, Mayor and City Council, Article 115, 2, City Council Meetings by adding new Section 115.070, Consent Agenda.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-25, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Please hit refresh.
Try to refresh your page.
Nothing?
No.
I can voice vote you.
Yeah, because his is on the... It's not even in the...
Here, let me try opening it one more time.
Motion carries 8 0 0. Item number 5, 24-26. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-26 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second. Sorry.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title 1, Government Code, Chapter 115, Mayor and City Council, Article 115, 2, City Council Meetings, Section 115.040, Duty to Attend Meetings of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
Do we have any questions or discussion from council before moving on to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-26, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries 8 0 0. Item number 6 is 24-27. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-27 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title 2, Public Health, Safety, and Welfare, Chapter 205, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 205, 3, Fireworks, Section 205.070, Fireworks of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have any updates from staff?
No.
Thank you, chief. Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-27, please.
Motion.
Second.
We are now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries 8 0 0. Item number 7, 24-28. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-28 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of the Old Savannah Phase 3 C subdivision.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-28, please.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're now going to take a vote on our computers. Motion carries 8 0 0. Item number 8, 24-29. An ordinance of the city council amending... I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-29 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title 1, Government Code, Chapter 115, Mayor and City Council, Article 115, 1, Mayor and City Council Generally, Section 115.035, Introduction and Adoption Procedures for Ordinances of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates.
No updates from staff. Does council have any questions or discussions before moving on to final passage? Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-29, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 8 0 0. Moving on to new business, number 9, 24-30. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-30 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. We will have Laura read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 935 through 937 North Main Street from light industrial M1 to two-family residential R2.
Thank you, Laura, and we have Mr. Tabor here this evening.
Good evening. Chris Tabor, Principal Planner. You've probably noticed a lot of rezones tonight. We have a lot of related rezones, and so what I'm going to do tonight is provide some background information with the first rezone, and then a much shorter summary of the information for the following ones that are related to this one. So, to briefly kind of cover what's going on in these rezones, in 1978, a 10-acre tract of land was rezoned from the city's old single-family residential R1 to light industrial M1. Later that year, the Cohix Northside subdivision shown on the screen there was platted and constructed. Lots 1 through 14 then later constructed residential uses throughout the next few decades. At that time, the M1 zoning district allowed both single-family and two-family units to be built on that zoning district. We had a large code overhaul in 1999 that removed the ability for the manufacturing use to allow for residential uses within it, bringing all of those properties into nonconformance. So, we have several nonconforming properties on that block. An individual, an owner of a few of these different properties, has reached out in a proactive effort to go ahead and rezone these so that he can later probably sell them, I assume, without any trouble. So, his interest in doing this is, as nonconforming properties, these have certain restrictions on them. You can't expand the footprint of the home. In the case of an extreme destruction of the building, it wouldn't be allowed to be reconstructed. So, there's a good reason for him to go ahead and look at doing that. So, each of these requested map amendments do meet the city's adopted plans and ordinances, and they are each currently served by City Water and Sewer. This first one is at 935 and 937 North Main Street, and they are going from light manufacturing M1 to two-family R2 on .23 acres. And the applicant is Chastain Rentals LLC. Staff is recommending approval on this one. Please do reach out with any questions you have on any of these at any time if I'm going too fast on, as we continue through these, because it's kind of an unusual one.
Sure. Do we have any questions from council? Do we have any citizen comments?
We did not have any citizen comments.
If we have any... Does council have any questions on this at all? I guess we're it for that one. So, does council understand... If you've seen P&amp;Z, you kind of know what's going on with these. Everything is here. We've got several that are kind of the exact same deal. So, we'll just go down through here, and we'll... Chris is going to stay up here, and we'll go on down through the line. Item number 10, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-31 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 936 through 938 North Walnut Avenue from light industrial M1 to two-family residential R2.
Good evening again. The rezone request is from Chastain Rentals LLC for 936 and 938 North Walnut Avenue. They're requesting a change from M1 light manufacturing to two-family R2 zoning on .23 acres. The... It is currently a nonconforming property with a nonconforming use, and the applicant is seeking to bring the existing use into conformity. Staff is recommending approval.
Do we have any questions from council? Seeing there are none, do we have any citizens' comments on this one? No citizens' comments. Remember, this is the first read, so if we have any questions, make sure you get with staff before our next meeting. Moving on to number 11, 24-32. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-32 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 918 North Walnut Avenue from light industrial M1 to medium-density, single-family residential R1M.
Mr. Tabor.
This rezone request is, again, from Chastain Rentals LLC for a rezone at 918 North Walnut from light manufacturing this time to single-family residential R1M on .23 acres. Again, there is an existing single-family home on the property. It's currently nonconforming, and the applicant is seeking to bring the existing use into conformity. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions from council? Mr. Neal.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, not necessarily about this one in specific, but there's five of these that are being rezoned. Do we expect the others to follow in that apartment complex? Are we going to be proactive, versus just kind of a wait-and-see?
Staff intends, in the next few months, to go ahead and try and contact... We've met with one of these people, or had a phone call conversation with one of them who is interested in this. It would be our intent to go ahead and try and get the rest of these brought into conformity. We... As in, as we did with these, we would waive the rezoning fees, as this really isn't, you know, it's not the fault of the property owner that they ended up in this situation.
Thank you.
Does council... Any other council have questions? Do we have any citizens' comments on this one? No citizens' comments. So, remember, this is a first read. If you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number 12, 24-33. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-33 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 916 North Walnut Avenue from light industrial M1 to medium-density, single-family residential R1M.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Tabor.
So, we've moved down south one lot. This rezone request, again, from Chastain Rentals LLC, a rezone for 916 North Walnut Street from light manufacturing to single-family R1M on .23 acres. Again, there is a structure, a single-family structure, existing on the property that is in nonconformance, and the applicant is seeking to bring the existing use into conformity. Staff is recommending approval.
Do we have any questions from council? Do we have any citizens' comments on this one? No citizens' comments. So, remember, this is a first read. If you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number 13, 24-34. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-34 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .23 acres of real property located at 914 North Walnut Avenue from light industrial M1 to medium-density, single-family residential R1M.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Tabor.
We've moved to south one more lot, to 914 North Walnut Avenue. This request is actually by VL Properties LLC. It is the same owner, under a different LLC. They are requesting a rezone from light manufacturing to R1M. There is an existing R1M structure on the property. It is currently nonconforming, and the applicant is seeking to bring the existing use into conformity. Staff is recommending approval.
Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Tabor, how long did it take you to track this down from 1978, from when this...
It took a couple people, a couple days.
Okay, I figured. And I just want to say, you know, waiving those fees, I think, is very appropriate. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other questions?
So, this is five of the 10 lots. Have we reached out to the other five lots for this also, or do they have to come to you?
We've not yet reached out to them. Again, like I explained to Councilman Neal, we will be making contact with those other remaining property owners. We'll send out letters and do... We don't have phone numbers for these individuals, but we'll do our best to contact them through whatever means we have. It is our intent to bring those properties into conformity. It's better for us, it's better for them, it's going to happen, it's going to have to happen eventually, better before somebody needs to sell a property and has a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Updike. Any other questions from council? Do we have any citizens' comments on this one?
Did not.
No citizens' comments. So, remember, this is a first read. If you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number 14, 24-35. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-35 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got two seconds, two motions. You've got that, Laura.
We're good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of .24 acres of real property located at 480 East US Highway 60 from two-family residential R2 to local commercial C1.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Tabor.
So, this one is a little bit different. Again, it's the same property owner, this time Chastain Investments. They're requesting a rezone from two-family R2 to local commercial C1. There is currently a nonconforming commercial building on the site that is occupied by commercial businesses. City staff were unable to determine the exact reason for allowing the construction of the building on that zoning district. We weren't able to reconstruct the events that brought that into happening. The applicant does wish to ensure that the zoning district matches the site and the current use of the property, however, and so they've requested an amendment to... That meets the city's adopted plans and ordinances. This property is currently served by city sewer and water, and staff is recommending approval.
Do we have any questions from council? Did we have any citizens' comments on this one?
We did talk to one individual that showed up at the meeting. She was mistaken in the property. She thought it was the property behind her, the C2 property to the far west, that triangle. But she did voice complaints relating to concerns that there would be a domino effect of rezones, I think is what she was thinking would be caused. But most of that is commercial already along our largest road.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before our next meeting. Item number 15, 24-36. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-36 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 40 acres of real property located at the intersection of South Farm Road 101 and West Farm Road 170 from Boyce Mixed Use Plan Development District, PDD, to amended Boyce Mixed Use Plan Development District, PDD.
We have Mr. Tabor here to give us an overview.
All right, this is the last one, I promise. The property owner, Jeff Boyce Enterprises, is requesting approval of a new development plan for the Boyce Mixed Use Plan Development District, which this change he's asking for essentially consists of one small amendment to the existing plan. The currently adopted development plan includes two uses on the property, multifamily residential and general commercial C2. If you look at this, the... Currently, the furthest south and east lot that doesn't have a building outline on it, that is the lot that is currently zoned or allowed for R3 multifamily uses. They are asking to go ahead and convert that one to C2 general commercial. So, this is one that was originally approved by city council as a PDD in May of 2021, and at that time, they had a range of a more even mix of multifamily and commercial projects on there. As the project went through the kind of development and funding phase, they responded to the market conditions around them, the influx of multifamily, and so they have begun kind of moving that out of there in the interest of, I'm sure, meeting the needs of the people who actually want to build commercial buildings right now. So, back in October of '23, we had the first amendment to this plan where they took off all the commercial, or I'm sorry, took off all the multifamily except for that Lot 9, and now they have come back and asked to remove that last piece of multifamily. So, the entire thing will basically be a general commercial C2 subdivision at that point. If you aren't aware, this one is currently being constructed now. So, this infrastructure plan, what you're approving tonight, includes the wastewater and water locations on there, which are all being put in currently, as well as the stormwater and detention. That road is going to connect up to US 60, that's a collector road, and will come all the way to Republic Road or M, and will also create a small stubout, as you see on there. So, in conjunction with this submittal, they did redo their traffic impact study, which honestly reduces the amount of traffic that they had originally. However, they are still building out to the original traffic study, which has right-in, right-out, off of 60, and then creates a right-turn lane off of Republic Road and a right-turn lane off the collector onto Republic Road. And again, that project is moving kind of fast. I think that we'll probably see some of those permits come in in the next four months. Staff is recommending approval on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from council? Do we have any citizen comments on this one?
We did not.
So, MoDOT on the Highway 60 front, the cut-out Highway 60, MoDOT has been involved with that?
Anytime that we are making connection to MoDOT's roads or entering their right-of-way with stormwater, we always involve them in the review process. They're required to permit any connection to those roads.
Do they have any concerns about signaling or anything like that?
No, these changes that were made were their requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first read, so if you have any more questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number 16, 24-37. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-37 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title 8, Fees, Chapter 805, Fee Schedule, Section 805.050, Buildings and Zoning of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Laura, and we have Ms. Duncan here to give us an overview.
Hi, Stephanie Fitzpatrick Duncan. I'm an engineer in the builds department. The item I'm about to discuss also relates to item number 17 on our agenda. We are proposing amendment changes to Chapter 805 and then also our fats, oils, and greases chapter. We are just wanting to be able to assess fees for permitting, and so we'll need to reference that in both of those sections. We're proposing a fee structure of $100 for the five-year permit cycle, and that will just help to offset the cost staff, the staff cost for inspections and permitting and the labor that goes into that process.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neal.
Do we know approximately how many businesses this will affect that are going to need to get this permit?
Right now, with our preliminary list, it's about 120 businesses is what we're anticipating, but that could fluctuate.
Gotcha. And then what would be the grace period from the time this passed until they had to do that?
We currently have a Fox permitting procedure in place. We're just not unable to assess fees, so that would be the only change that we're proposing tonight, but our intention is to work with businesses to be in compliance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Campbell. So, I'm assuming that there's an inspection periodically, and will this go into effect at that next inspection date, or like when this goes into effect?
This fee would go into effect at time of permitting, so for businesses that are already permitted, they would not be assessed those fees until their permit cycle renews, and those permits run for a five-year cycle.
Any other questions from council? So, remember, this is the first reading, so if you have any other questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number 17, 24-38. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-38 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8 0 0. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title 7, Utilities, Chapter 715, Sewers sewers and sewage disposal, article seven fifteen two, use of the publicly owned treatment works, section seven fifteen point one nine zero, fats, oils, grease, and sand of the municipal code of the city of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Laura, and we got Stephanie, two for two.
This item is related to the item that we just discussed, so if there's any questions, please let me know.
Have any questions from city council? Seeing there are none, remember, this is a first reading, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number eighteen twenty-four dash R dash two five. A resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Loomis Armored U.S. LLC for the purpose of safekeeping its currency and increasing the level of safety for city employees. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-five, please.
Motion.
Second.
Bob Ford here to give us an overview.
Good evening, Bob Ford, Finance Director. Tonight, we're going to be talking about cash handling. As you know, Arvis Bank is our sole operating bank for the city. We're contractually bound to them, and as we have explored options of how to improve how we handle cash, how we deposit cash, how we transport cash, in our discussions with with Arvis, they indicated that they have a sole source relationship with Loomis Armored Car Service, and in that relationship, Loomis is their sole provider of transport between their customers and the bank. And so tonight, we're asking that we are that you would give us the path forward to be able to negotiate with Loomis and finalize an agreement with Loomis Armored Car Service to become the transport facility for the city transporting our cash from our location to Arvis Bank. Let me, I want to give you a little bit of background as to what's prompting this. So as you know, the rush is opening, and we're expecting to see more and more activity. We're going to see higher admissions activity, both on a volume basis, as well as they've increased their pricing. So cash is going to continue to become a bigger issue over the summer, and how we handle cash is important. And today, cash is transported by city personnel, either in a city vehicle or a personal vehicle, is transported to the finance department. Once we receive the cash, we prepare a deposit, and that deposit is then picked up by an unarmored courier service. I refer to the service as the little lady in the Prius. We need to move beyond this, and the little lady in the Prius then puts our cash in her backseat, drives it to the bank, which is located at Kansas Expressway and Republic Road. That exposure for the city is it it well, just gives us an undue and a level of risk that we don't need to take at this point in time. Ultimately, our goal within the cities over the next couple of years to move to an environment where we're handling less and less cash and that we're the our systems are enabled to allow us to take other forms of payment. But until we get to that point in time, cash is something we're going to live with and that we need to make sure that we transport that cash safely, and we don't put our employees in jeopardy because they're having to transport twenty thousand dollars of cash in their passenger seat. So the proposal is to engage with Loomis, and Loomis will provide what they call a virtual vault. So basically, it's a safe that'll go into both the community center and the bills facility. And as we make deposits into that virtual vault, the virtual vault will count that currency that's going in, it will prepare a report for us, but the most important thing is we get bank credit the minute it goes in. So it's like a virtual bank sitting in the community center. So once the money is in the vault and we received our provisional credit with the bank, that money technically becomes a property of the bank because we've already gotten our commercial credit, our deposit credit for those for that money. And then on a periodic basis, we're going to set it up for the for the community center to be twice a week and for bills to be every other week. Loomis will come, armored car service, an armed guard will come in, pick up the cash, and take it to the bank. So the important things here are, one, it takes our personnel out of that cash handling environment, and so we increase the safety for our our employees. Two, it increases the security around our cash not being transported by the little lady in the Prius. And third, we're getting provisional credit the minute that we put the money in the virtual vault. It's like we're depositing that money at Arvis Bank. You might recall that when we did our our bank search a number of years ago, one of the thoughts would be, one of the requirements we had was that we wanted a local bank. Arvis at the time thought they were going to be building a bricks and mortar facility in Republic fairly soon. It looks like that facility is a ways off. So this virtual vault concept is a great solution for us with regards to dealing with our cash, keeping our people safe, getting the money in the bank as quickly as possible. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, before I get there, let me let me just, let me give you an idea on expense because it's important to understand that the reason why we're having this discussion is that it's a five-year contract for the city, and the worst-case scenario, so we've looked at all the costs that would go into it, so fuel surcharges, maximum CPI adjustments to the pricing of five percent. We've looked at all the worst-case scenarios and factored that into the pricing into the not-to-exceed number, and for a five over the five-year contract, that would be about eighty-two thousand dollars for the city. But if you look at the incremental cost per year, the not-to-exceed case, really, if you look at our current, the little lady in the Prius and what they charge and versus what we're going to be charged from Loomis, it's an incremental cost over the life of the contract of forty-two thousand dollars. But the most likely scenario is CPI is not five percent a year for the next five years. We don't have a lot of fuel charges. We don't have all the incremental costs that are factored into our analysis. So the most likely case is over the contract life, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars or about five grand a year. So given that perspective, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Updike. Is if you guys have, you guys can have have extra pickups besides, you know, twice a week at the community center and every other week at the builds?
There there is no point at this point in time to do that for two reasons. One, the cassettes that are embedded in the safe are big enough to handle the volume that we have, we're expecting to see coming into the community center. And because we're getting provisional credit, the minute we put it in the vault, it's like it's in the bank. And so there is no reason for an additional pickup unless the vault is full.
Mr. Kirk.
Yes, Mayor. Five-year contract, what's our current contract with them on the on the treasury services?
We're locked into them for another three years.
And then, and you touched on earlier, I remember the time when we worded the bid, it wasn't a requirement, but they implied they were in the process of purchasing it. I mean, is there any cost share? You know, I mean, I think we wouldn't have, I don't know if it matters how far it goes distance-wise, that a branch here, is there any possibility of cost share? But again, it wasn't required, but I do remember that was brought up several times during the process.
Mr. Kirk, we haven't had that discussion with Arvis Bank. Not, I wasn't here during that discussion, but I do know it was part of the requirement, part of the RFP. There was some discussion around having the bank here locally. In discussions with Arvis, they've made comments that I guess they their requirements, they build in a lower income area before they can actually build a building within Republic, kind of banking rule or regulation. Anyway, it's it it sounds to me like a building is a ways off.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be is, would we still have the service of that a branch here?
I think we'd still have some level of service in terms of armored car service to transport the cash. We need to take our people out of the mix. The exposure, we've got people, Garrett can talk to this better than I can, but we have people within the Parks and Recs organization that are transporting cash from the ball field up to the community center, and then they're transporting that cash during daylight hours, but still, there could be on a on a busy, after a busy weekend, we could see twenty thousand dollars in someone's backseat heading over to the bills building. We need to get out of that business, and we need to we need to have that that cash transported by an armored car service. So no matter what, we would be looking for some solution here.
Yep. Thanks.
So with the transportation from the rush to the community center, from the ballpark to the community center, you're still having your staff doing that, or is that going to be escorted? What are you going to do with that?
We've had discussions with with Chief Sales about one of his officers being available to walk with the personnel. So the plan is to try to coordinate that effort, and the chief has been wholeheartedly supportive of the concept. So the idea would be to try to identify a time during the day when we could transport cash from the ball field up to the community center, and then we would put it in the virtual vault at that point.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Neal.
Mr. Mayor, we have the goal on here of being a cashless city by two thousand and twenty-seven. What kind of early termination would we have with this contract?
Well, we're always going to have, even though our goal is to be cashless, we're always going to have a need to deposit cash. So the way we would, there is no early termination, there is no outlaws. We would just dial back the number of pickups. So today, we're picking up twice a week from the community center. At that point in time, if it looked like we only needed to pick up every other week, we would dial that back, that would drop our charges.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing there are none, and as this as a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? We have motion carries seven one zero. Moving on to number item number nineteen twenty-four dash R dash twenty-six. A resolution of the city council approving the independent audit report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-four dash R dash two six, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We have Bob Ford and John Cummings here this evening to present for us. Give us a brief overview.
Brief, huh?
Well, it's going to be hard to make that brief, but yeah. As long as you need, we're here for you.
All right, well, good deal. I'm John Cummings. I'm with KPM CPAs, and thank you for having me tonight. And as noted, I am going over the audit of the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. We're going to start on page four. I was told that I'm entertaining on this as auditors go. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. My entertainment level may be a little lower tonight because I'm personally getting audited at work because it's our peer review, and it's been a crazy week last week getting ready for it and then going through it this week. So still for you guys, putting up with us. It always brings back a reminder of what we do to people on a regular basis. So feel bad about that in some ways, but they handled it with great decorum and pleasant demeanors, so I appreciate all of the assistance. Ford's department and everybody that helped with the audits. So we're going to start on page four. This is where we give our report on the financial statements, and you can see there on the very top is opinions, and in our opinion, the financial statements of the city in all material respects are presented fairly, and there's respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Republic, Missouri as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. That is a clean or unmodified opinion, is the best possible result you can get, and what your bondholders hope that you have. So the basis for that set of opinions is that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. And management is responsible for the financial statements, so what we do on that is we assist the city in preparing these financial statements, and then we present them over to the finance department for their review and approval, and then if there's back and forth and changes and things, then we come back after their approval and we in the process of finalizing and getting everything wrapped up for this particular meeting. So that is the process. There is a nice kind of summary section, which I will let you read in your spare time, but if you need a snapshot of what happened, the management's discussion and analysis section is technically unaudited, but it's, if you look, it's all tied through on the financial statement numbers to what you see in the financial statements. This starts on page eight, and it gives a really good snapshot of financial information for the year. And so if you just needed a quick reference guide to what happened at the city or what's coming up, that might be a good place to look. I'm going to turn over to page twenty-seven, and in the interest of keeping this rolling, I will be honest, when I saw the agenda, I would have taken the over on forty-five minutes. So, you know, I was not expecting to be on this early, so good job.
Efficient.
Very efficient. Amazing what baseball hail predictions do. Motivation to move quickly. So this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for your governmental funds, and those are the general fund, the street fund, the parks and recreation fund, and the non-major governmental funds. And you might say, I don't have, I don't have the non-major governmental funds. Well, that's a bunch of smaller funds kind of rolled together. There's a combining schedule in the back of the report. This is a concept that came in under Gatsby thirty-four and allows really to condense the financial statement information down to something that's a little bit more consumable than maybe what you've seen in the past. So this is basically the revenues and expenditures or income statement, and shows basically what came in, what went out, and the change between those two items for the general fund. You had total revenues of eleven million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. That's up about two hundred and ninety-five thousand compared to last year. And on expenditures, you had ten million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, which is up about one point four million dollars compared to last year, because this may surprise all of you, you have a lot of stuff going on, and you're doing a lot of big projects that are going to help the city for a lot of years, so that's a good thing. And overall, the net there is a gain for the year of one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. On the street fund, you had total revenues of four million, seven hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's up one point five million dollars. Kind of the breakdown of that is tax revenue is up about six hundred and forty-six thousand. License and permits down about fifty thousand over last year, some of that's coding, and then intergovernmental revenues or grants were nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is up about five hundred and twenty-five thousand over last year. On the expenditure side of the equation, we're actually down about two point four million at five million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. There was a decline here or an excess of expenses over revenues of one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. On the Parks and Rec Fund, you had total revenues of five million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. That is up about four hundred thousand over last year. A chunk of that is taxes, of course. And then on the expenditure side, about five point eight million dollars at nine million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is a decline of about four point seven million. On the next page, I'm going to tell you more about that, so don't panic yet. On the revenues for the non-majors, that amounted to one million, six hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's down about three million dollars from last year because last year, surprise, surprise, you had a lot of ARP money that you didn't have this year. Actually, all that's surprising. On expenditures in those funds, you had seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is down about two point six million, and overall, they increased by eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, just revenues over expenses. And across all of your governmental funds, you had a decline of three million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seven dollars of just straight revenues over expenses. If you turn to the next page, you'll see there's a lot of other potential revenues and transfers and things that impact how the funds ultimately ended up. In the general fund, you had insurance recoveries of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars, sales of assets of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, transfers in and out, all of that nets to a net financing source of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, twenty-one dollars, and you had a change in fund balances of two million, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars to the good for the year. You'll see down here at the bottom, there's fund balance, January one, that's what you started the year with, and then there's an equity transfer line there that has various amounts in and out across the page. What this amounts to is at the end of twenty-two, you had money still setting in the ARPA fund that hadn't been distributed out to the other funds because you technically spent it so that you could clear it off for federal purposes, and then reallocated your freed-up local funds and reimbursed the funds so you could do the projects that you so it's kind of a function of just accounting for federal. That's what this is all about, is basically redistributing the ARPA fund across the other funds. So general fund got a hundred and ninety-four thousand, twenty-four dollars, ends the year with eleven million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, so good year in the general fund. The street fund had proceeds from new debt issuance issuances of two million, seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars, transfers in and out, all netting. in and out, all netting to $3,830,312. And that left a gain for the year of $2,710,590. You had equity transfer of $562,872, and ended the year with total fund balances of $6,124,759. Good on numbers so far? Okay, I'm going to keep moving fast. On the Parks and Rec Fund, you can see there that you had proceeds from new debt issuances of $9,920,000. That helps offset that loss we talked about earlier and gives you some money to finish out projects. And so you're up for the year at $5,529,683. And there was $216,978 that came in on equity transfer from ARPA, leaving a total ending fund balance of $6,772,462. On the non-major group of funds, there were transfers out of $1,447,285. That left a decline for the year of $574,621. You see the transfer out of $2,582,184, leaving fund balances in your non-major governmental funds of $1,588,534. So overall, the city increased its governmental fund balances by about $8 million for the year after equity transfers and overall activities. So ends the year with total fund balances of $26,358,628, our own financial compared to years ago. Good job. Keep up the good work. That, we'll turn over to page 32. Few more numbers. These are not quite as hard to get through maybe as the governmental funds. You have Water and Sewer Fund, which are both considered enterprise funds. And enterprise funds, in case you didn't know, do have a slightly different method of accounting compared to governmental funds because you're actually tracking long-term items like capital assets and also long-term debt as actual liabilities or assets. So you have things like depreciation that wouldn't exist in a governmental fund, so this is more of a true business-type accounting model. On your water fund, you had total operating revenues of $2,789,18. That is up about $252,000 over last year. Operating expenses climbed by about $1 million to $3,205,508. The bulk of that was fairly significant line repairs, and then also your tower projects where you had them painted. And then you had a net non-operating revenue of $129,212. That's down about $74,000 from last year. You had capital contributions from developers of $2,78,860, transfers out of $410,636, which left a change in net position of $1,380,172, at equity transfer of $238,725, and an ending net position of $8,975,024. Good year in the water fund as well. Sewer had a good year as well with total operating revenues of $6,13,753. That's up about, I think, $1.6 million, so significant. And then total operating revenues were $4,39,209, left a operating income of $1,974,544. Had a net non-operating expense of $76,190. Capital contributions from federal grant of $14,815,659. This triggered what's known as a single audit because it was federally funded, and we'll talk about that next. You had developer-donated infrastructure of $3,186,790. That is up about $1.9 million over last year. Transfers out were $568,046, and that left a change in net position of $19,332,757. And then there was equity transfer of $1,369,485, which left a net position at the end of the year of $42,652,343. And very good financials in that fund as well. Overall, the utilities increased by about $22.3 million for the year, so very good. Any questions?
Questions from council?
Okay, so that takes care of the financials, right? Okay. So we're going to turn over and look at, I mentioned the single audit, and that's, whenever you go over $750,000 in federal funds, you have to have what's known as a single audit. And basically, there is a audit program compliance guide where we have to go in and check compliance requirements from the federal agency to ensure that the city did its part to meet the federal red tape. It's not a real fun thing to go through. It's not a real fun thing to document, so it can be a little bit daunting. And in this particular case, you didn't actually get the money during the year. You got it right after the year, but it was considered receivable because it was reimbursing you the dollars you'd already spent. So you can see there on page 80, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, that COVID-19 and coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds of $14,815,659. And that is the large influx that came through the state of Missouri, and it wound up being the major program tested, as you might imagine, since you had a total of $15,283,335 in total federal expenditures. So if you're curious about how you did on that particular part of the audit, you can turn to page 82, which is Schedule of Findings and Question Cost, and it gives a summary of auditor's results. First talks about the opinion that you received on your financial statements that I've mentioned earlier, which is unmodified, and then the internal control over financial reporting. And there are no material weaknesses identified, and there were no reportable significant deficiencies. You might recall last year that there would have been one about segregation of duties. So we've been on the fence evaluating that a bit. This year, we got kind of to the point with your mitigating controls that that could come out. So that's what we did. So it is not there now. There were no instances of non-compliance material to the financial statements noted. On your federal awards, which is the single audit, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and there were no issues with non-compliance that needed to be reported under 2 CFR 20516A. And there is an unmodified report on the major federal program, which is clean. Programs listed there, and the threshold for a type A or a type B program is noted at $750,000. And you can see that you're audited qualified as a low-risk audity. You have to have consecutive single audits in order to qualify as a low-risk audity, and the compliance examination wouldn't count for that, and you had a financial statement finding last year, so you wouldn't qualify for that. But if next year you're clean, then the next year you could potentially be a low-risk. That's good. All right. Any questions on any of that? Got one more thing, and then we're going to get out of here. I'm going to, hopefully I can get through this in three minutes. So the next thing is the letter. You should have two letters. I'm going to talk about the ones that says new pronouncements on it. And while you're finding that, I will tell you about the other letter that doesn't say new pronouncements on it. That other letter is the Letter to Those Charged with Governance, which is all of you, and it has required information that we have to communicate as auditors to those charged with governance, which is all of you. It's our last chance to tattle on everybody and kind of just do it in a really quiet setting because that report doesn't go to anyone else but you guys. And so I will spoil it. There's nothing in there that's crazy. It does talk about some internal entries that we had, and of course, the audit, they're very normal. And a lot of municipalities have those types of entries. It's not a big deal. It's our chance to talk about disagreements with management or whether they were uncooperative or anything like that. And you can tell from my earlier comments, that was not the case. Everybody was very kind, very helpful, and we really appreciate that. We know that we do actually come in and disrupt life pretty badly because we ask for an awful lot of information. And we had four people on the audit team this year, which is one more than normal, and one of them was remote. So there was a lot of email traffic. I'm sure that was not fun, but everybody did a great job of getting us what we need. Certainly appreciate all that. So new pronouncements. The GASB, or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, cannot leave well enough alone. Any person, anybody in the room with GASB? Okay, safe space, right? Okay. So love these guys. When I started in this profession, I think we were on like GASB 24 or 26, something like that. It's been a long time, but hasn't been that long to be to now GASB 102. That's a lot of change for governmental accounting in a very short amount of time. I'm kind of older, and I'm surprised I'm getting through this without my glasses, but, you know, it hasn't been that long. So this is an awful lot of change to absorb in governmental accounting. Fortunately, these particular changes are not all that impactful. So maybe they're going for quantity over quality right now. So we'll take it. The first one here is GASB Statement 100, deals with accounting changes and error corrections. And it basically is an amendment to GASB 62, and it basically tells us how to deal with accounting changes or error corrections at GASB Statement 100. Very helpful. It is effective for your 2024 year-end. On GASB Statement 101, deals with compensated abscences. It updates the recognition and measurement guidance for compensated abscences and certain previously required disclosures, and is effective for 2024 as well. But basically, it just opts out counting jury duty, bereavement leave, military leave, and a few other little kind of ancillary leaves in the calculation just to make it easier administratively for cities to track everything. On GASB Statement 102, Certain Risk Dislosures, requires governments to disclose information about certain risks they face due to concentrations or constraints in their revenues or expenditures or expenses. So if you had a single industry in town that was your main employer for everybody in town and the only reason people lived here, we'd have to make a note in the report about it. And that's effective for December 31st, 2025, year-end. So not, like I said, all that impactful because you have a lot of things going on that have people here. So that's a very good thing. On the next page, Cybersecurity and Internal Controls. If you saw the one last year, this is a little bit more beefed up based on an experience that I had since I saw you last, I think. Life comes at me fast sometimes. I got a call from a superintendent of a school pretty near here, and he was kind of in a panic because his payroll clerk or his AP clerk had paid out two pay apps on a large construction project, on a bond project, about a week previous, $2.3 million worth to what turned out to not be the vendor. So they were in a bit of a panic. They got very lucky in that this particular individual was friends with a Secret Service agent, and weirdly, the AP clerk had done a lot of things right. Had called the vendor and said, I'm talking to this person via email. Oh, yeah, that person started a month ago, and they're your account rep, and yeah, just do whatever they say. Well, part of what they said was change the ACH payment information. And that should have been a big flag, but didn't ask quite the right questions. So this kind of walks through the right questions and some things to do, and I know the city's kind of had its own experiences in this area. But the good news out of this particular story is that the Secret Service was able to actually be involved and got all of it, about $70,000 of it back over about a six-month period. They said that was exceedingly rare. So being a good auditor and a good advocate for my clients, I said, can I please get a contact at the Secret Service in case this happens to any of my clients? It's been crickets. I think this is not what they want to normally do, so I think they want the FBI to handle this stuff. But they were very effective. I will give them that. So this is kind of helping out with that. I realize that, you know, the city's trying to do everything it can on cybersecurity, and I had a conversation before the meeting, and there are steps being taken. I appreciate all of that, but this is a reminder that this stuff is real, it is local, it does happen, and even at your best efforts, you know, something can go wrong. So doing everything you can sets the city up for success and minimizes the danger. So that's what we want to see. Item three here talks about account coding, and I think I threw Bob for a loop on this one a little bit, but the city, I'm sure you have noticed, is going through a rather large account coding re-hall. It's going to be completely different, I believe, when I see it next time. But some of that started in this, and so I wanted to kind of give a little reminder to be sure on revenues, to think about if it's a governmental fund or an enterprise fund, and same on expenses because how those things get tracked is a little different depending on what fund you're in because the GASB is weird. So on a revenue, things go by natural classification. So what kind of revenue is it? Is it a grant? Is it a donation? Is it a charge for service? That kind of thing. So be sure that the new coding takes that into account. Things get significantly weirder when you're talking about a governmental fund because in governmental funds, on the financial statements, you noticed we had to report by department, essentially, or by function of government. So within each function of government, you still need to know how much you spent in salaries, fuel, and benefits, and all the different things, but it's not just as clear as, say, in Water Sewer where you just have salaries, benefits, and all the different categories of actual expense by its natural category. So being sure that the new account coding is set up to handle all of that and flow nicely into your financial statements is going to basically yield you better reports throughout the year, which I think you're getting, and it's just going to make everything work a lot smoother. So that's what this is about, is just a reminder to keep all of that in mind as you're going through 2024. So the next item, item four, deals with budgetary compliance and something from last year. And in the prior year, there was a negative fund balance budgeted in the major grants fund, and that was not the case this year, so we commend you for meeting the budgetary statutes. So good job on that, ending on a good note. I didn't make it in three minutes. Made it, mate.
Stood pretty fast.
Still pretty good. We covered a lot of ground. That is a big report.
Absolutely. Do we have any other questions from council? Thank you very much. That was a lot of information. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. If y'all have any questions, I'm available all the time, as many of you know, and so feel free to reach out if you have any questions or anything.
Excellent. Thank you, John. As this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8-0-0. Moving on to number 20, 24-R-27, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the issuance of a full notice to proceed pursuant to Amendment 1 to the Phase 2 Contract Price Amendment for the wastewater treatment facility expansion project. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-27, please.
Motion. Save.
Got a motion and a second, and we have Allison White with Burns &amp; McDonald here this evening. Give us an overview.
Hi, I'm Ally White. I think that you guys have heard a lot about this project. Up to today, we've had a limited notice to proceed to deliver the project at the wastewater treatment plant. This is the fifth of five projects that we're delivering for the wastewater utility. Earlier this year, that limited notice to proceed was given contingent upon getting the loan closed with the SRF program. We talked about it earlier today. That loan is going to be closed in early June, so now we're just looking for full approval to proceed with the delivery of the project.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing we have no questions, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 8-0-0. Moving on to reports from staff. Ms. Addington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I know we all send David well wishes and are very excited to have him back next week. So Garrett, are we ready?
We're ready.
We're ready. The rush opens this weekend. I'm sure you are all excited about that, and we'll come, and what, noon on Saturday?
Noon.
All right, be ready. The Wellness Fair is this Thursday. It's our fourth annual, so everybody's encouraged to attend, 10:30 to 1:30 at Parks and Rec. The admin report, I want to commend Laura. She does such a great job putting all this information together, and I think she said with all the links and everything, it was about 200 pages. So I encourage everybody to look at the admin report, read it. It's packed full of a lot of information, a lot of projects. I just want to highlight a couple of them. There is a listing of overlays included in the admin report. Brian and I let me know that those are all intended to be completed by August 9th. Additionally, the downtown revitalization, there is a link to this amazing booklet. I know there are several staff members and council members that helped with the downtown revitalization project, the jury partnership, great effort. Thank you for your time and your effort on it. It is an amazing product, so I encourage all of you to look at that link within the admin report. There's also additional projects, a lot going on within the city. So council workshop, again, there's several projects we're going to highlight that are not yet in the admin report, but in our mission of being aggressively progressive, we are excited to share a lot of that content with council. And the last thing I just want to mention, as we celebrate Memorial Day weekend, this weekend, I just encourage weekend, I just encourage everybody to take a moment to think of all the sacrifices made on behalf of our military men and women that made, you know, just made it possible for our country and for us to live in freedom. So with that, Mayor, I'm gonna give it back to you.
Thank you, Lisa. Does council have anything to say this evening? We'll start down here and go down there.
Mr. Mayor? I just want to say, a great job on another successful audit. I know Bob's group put a lot of work into it, but I'd also point out that, you know, budgeting is really tough. I think page 66 through like 78 shows how well we did on our budget. I think we pretty much exceeded all those, so just want to say kudos. It's a lot of work and effort that goes into it, and probably pretty rare that we were able to do that well compared to budget, so thanks to your guys' efforts in that.
Thank you, Mr. Gergi. Do we have any other council members have anything to say this evening? Seeing there are none, I'm gonna be short and sweet. I'm looking forward to Thursday and the Rush. That's exciting, super exciting, so I'm looking forward to that. Touching on what Lisa said, definitely drawing attention to David's administrative report. There is so much information for that just already, it's hard to get through it. But between all of the links on Main Street, the OTO, and everything else that's been going on in Republic, there is a lot of information on that. As a reminder to council, I know everyone's gotten the email about David's evaluation. Just please make sure that you have that finished by June 5th so that Lisa can put that together for us. Thanks again to the P&amp;Z 101, again at the end with the non-conforming uses. So I know everyone's watching our plan and zoning and meetings, and especially at the end, it's the extra special part where you get a little bit of information, and really appreciate staff putting that together for us, so that is a big help. Other than that, that's all I have, other than having a safe Memorial Day weekend, and I'll see you-